Welcome to the Audit Subcommittee of the Springfield City Council. It is now Tuesday, March 16th at four o'clock and we will bring this meeting to order. I am joined by Counselor Allen, who is a member of this committee. And just, just a couple of housekeeping notes, Mr. No. I know we actually have a five or a 4:30 COVID meeting. I've talked to our administrative assistants. So if in the future, if we could just make sure that we allot an hour either before or after any other meeting that might be scheduled. Certainly was my mistake at this point for this particular meeting. So I will take the blame, but I know there are going to be some folks that want to attend that COVID-19 meeting at 4:30. So you know, to the extent that we can, let's, let's try to plan around any other meetings that are taking place. With that said, we have three agenda items, Mr. No. One is a presentation and discussion on the Springfield Police Department compensatory overtime. The other one is a discussion on the Springfield Police Department Educational Incentive Program. And then the third is a discussion of contracting in the city of Springfield. So, Mr. No, I think I can bring item number three to a close very quickly so as to leave you with the rest of the time to discuss items number one and two, as I know there are other people here. I had a conversation with TJ prior to this meeting and he said he was going to comb the numbers a bit further just to make sure that there, that those were all of the contracts. And it seems to me that we also probably should have a separate meeting on that particular issue as it may take some time. And we can certainly use the time in between to give TJ an opportunity as well as Theo to make sure that they are getting and producing all of the information that we want to see. I think it was great that we had 13% or 12.7% in minority owned, and minority and women owned businesses. But at the same time, I think on the flip side, it was also, you know, pretty dismal that we only have, that we only have 25% of the contracts going to the city of Springfield businesses and that we're dishing out over 78 million in monies out of the 90 million in fiscal year 2019. So I'd like to believe those numbers are wrong. If we add more contracts to the mix and at the same time, it'd be nice if the minority owned and women owned businesses, if those numbers remain the same. And just for clarity purposes, and I'll turn it over to anybody else who has any questions or want to comment regarding item number three. What I am looking for specifically, and I think I've done this in the form of a public records quest as well, is that I'm requesting all city contracts that the city of Springfield has entered into. And this includes school department contracts, consulting contracts, any contracts that might not have been, you know, specifically highlighted in my, my request. I would like to see all contracts. I, I thought 315 for a city this size was entirely, seems a little low, although I could be wrong. And I don't care if the contracts are for a dollar or for a million dollars. I'd like to have access to that information. And I think it's only, you know, we're only able to get a full and accurate account as to where we stand if we have an idea as to what those contracts are, who those businesses are and what the amounts are. And with that said, you know, I don't have anything further to say on the issue, but I will, if there is anybody else that wants to say something at this time regarding item number three, feel free to do so. Otherwise, we'll await more information and we'll have a separate meeting solely dealing with that item.
If I can add something, I agree Counselor Hurst, that this should be a separate meeting and you should be provided with additional information. So you can, you know, make an informed request as to what information that you'll need.
Absolutely. We certainly don't want to waste your time either, Mr. No, as, as I know you've, you've, you've got a lot on your plate. So with that said, we'll move it, we'll start with item number one and, and I'll turn it over to you, Mr. No.
Right. I will start off with the compensatory overtime report. Does everyone see my screen? There should be the BOT report or the Springfield Department, Springfield Police Department compensatory overtime report?
Yes.
Okay. So with that said, um, let me start off with why we did this review. The CFO requested this review based upon some large expenditures being made out of the BOT account or the bankable overtime account. Our objective for this review was to review established policies and procedures and identify opportunities for improvement. So our overall conclusion with this review is that the Springfield Police Department, they do have policies in place and it's not like they were devoid of any policies and procedures. We just made recommendations for them to improve on their existing policies and procedures. So with that said, let me just go into page three on, on the background. So the Springfield Police Department has a program where they could, they allow officers to defer the use or payment upon separation of their overtime hours. And this is limited to 300 hours in total. So the, the BOT liability, it's basically a liability until it gets used or payout as of 12/3/2018 was approximately 1.2 million. So moving on to page six of the report, I'll go through the first finding. So our first finding has to do with their policies and procedures. We noted that they were outdated, very manual, a lot of paper involved. And as such, it was prone to errors. Moving on to page, same page, finding two. We also noted that the current BOT policies and procedures were not unnecessarily always adhered to. For example, on two A, we noted that it's part of requesting bankable overtime, you had to fill out an overtime form requesting the bankable overtime and all information on that form had to be complete, including the signature of the officer requesting the overtime along with the supervisor's approval and the description of their duties. So we noted in those, many forms were, were missing this information. Moving on to finding two C, we also noted that there were instances where the maximum BOT hours for certain individuals were exceeded that threshold of 300 hours. So the, the police department has corrected this issue as soon as they were made aware of it. And moving on to finding four, this is the biggest finding in our report because it has an economic impact on the city. So my understanding is this BOT program was that it was never meant to be like a retirement vehicle. It's like a program where they allow officers to use their overtime hours in the future and not necessarily use it as like a vehicle upon retirement to get paid out dollars that they've earned. So, so what this, the current BOT program allows a patrolman to earn BOT hours at one rate and that, that those same hours could be paid out probably 20 years at the rate that they're currently at, maybe a lieutenant or deputy. So that's a big, that's a big increase. So that's why TJ brought this up to our attention because he was seeing some large, large payments going out and impacting the city. And we took a look at the BOT payouts from December 2016 through October 2019. And we noted positions of lieutenant or higher comprised 20% of the retirees, yet the BOT payout was closer to like 45%. So these higher paid officers were taking, were using this economic incentive when they, you know, for this BOT program. So moving on to finding five, which, which has to do with basically tracking BOT hours and tell us staff, tell us staff is the Springfield Police Department's scheduling program along with the tracking hours. We noted that the hour, the hours in that program did not conform to existing contract. So as a result, there was an overstatement in the liability to, at the city for about 40,000. Again, the police department fixed this error to conform it to the union contract. And finding six, which is our last finding, in the BOT accrual is this category, got a category called BOT furlough hours. There are 15 employees with over a thousand hours and a potential payout liability of 57,000. And these BOT furlough hours, there's no documentation to support of the hours recorded or assigned to these individuals. So where our understanding is that this related to, I guess, when offices were furloughed about 15 years ago. And for some, some reason, the paperwork was never maintained or misplaced. So our recommendation here is just to, you know, find those records if possible. So overall recommendation for this program is to update the policy. So just tighten up the policy in that let's basically have the city define how the BOT hours can be converted to pay and the process for payout. So TJ and I were talking about this and along with the Springfield Police Department, just before someone, before an officer moves to a different pay grade that they get paid out. So they're paid out at one rate or the rate at which they're earned. And, and also just process for, you know, when they should receive payment in that they can't continually carry this, these accrued amounts year after year, that there should be a specific process for the payouts. So with that said, I will open it up for questions. Counselor Hurst, I think you're muted.
Are there any questions from anyone else on the committee? Counselor Allen, I think it's just you and I today. So if you don't have any questions, you're muted, Counselor.
Yeah, sorry. I just put up my hand there.
Okay.
Want me to go?
Yeah, oh, it's all yours. It's just you and I, Counselor Allen. So you jump in whenever you want to jump in, sir.
There might be somebody else with a question, but, but Young, so bottom line, is this program still in effect and are you making changes to fix it or? Maybe you can move the report back to the top.
Oh, yeah. Yes, this program is still in effect and the Springfield Police Department, along with city management, agreed to tighten up the program in terms of defining the payout requirement.
So that's. Okay. What does BOT stand for?
Bankable, bankable overtime.
Bankable overtime. And does this apply to any other department in the city?
No, it's, it's Springfield Police Department only.
Police Department only. So you satisfied with, with, with your look at it and what your recommendations are? And you, you feel like you took a good look at it and recommendations will address what needs to be done?
Yes. City is aware of the biggest hole in this program. As I mentioned, the BOT hours being earned at one rate and being paid out at another rate.
Gotcha, okay.
So Counselor Allen, this is TJ. What we are going to try to do, and I say try, is that this has been something that's been going on quite a while. The intent of the BOT is to, we should be paying it out when they leave or get promoted to the next rank. So if you're officers, when you become a sergeant, you should get paid out of your, your BOT. If you go from sergeant to lieutenant, so on and so forth, you get paid out. What it's become is a retirement vehicle to get paid out at the end of a career, usually a significantly higher rate. And that's something that the police department and Attorney Mahoney and I are going to be working with the union to have a conversation with them about it. Do we think they're going to go for it? I'm not exactly sure, but it's something we're going to ask about just to make sure that they understand how it's been done. And this has been done this way for, I can't even tell you how long, 20 years, who knows? But a long, long time it's been going on. And it's something that we just wanted to start taking a look at and trying to get our handle on. And I know the police department is going to fix their, tighten their processes and procedure as it relates to the paperwork that needs to be signed by supervisors and stuff that goes into the bank of the bankable overtime.
All right. So is it, is it a, thanks TJ, just follow up on that. Is it a policy that just kind of carried along or did it, and you know, they put it in, in place 20 years ago and it just kind of stayed there? Or is it something that actually has been negotiated at the negotiating table?
It's a policy that's been in place for many, many years, past practice.
Okay. All right, I'm all set, Counselor Hurst.
Thank you, Counselor Allen. We're also joined by Counselor Davila. Mr. No, quick question. How much could we have saved if we would have done it the way in which TJ would like to do it? Do we have any estimated potential savings?
Unfortunately, we can't track that information because the BOT hours, they don't record, they don't record the date at which the BOT hours are initially earned. Had, had that been recorded, then we would be able to know.
I see.
Extra was paid out. So these BOT hours keep rolling forward, rolling over year after year without any dates associated with them.
I see. And so TJ, what you, we're also, and I know I see bills here, we're also thinking that this is something that, that is going to have to be negotiated if we want to do it the way in which you're, you're highlighting, which seems to make perfect sense to me.
So Bill, I don't know if you want to answer that one. I mean, I'd like to just implement it, but I would assume we'd get some file, some sort of grievance because there's been a retirement vehicle for so long. It has never intended to be that. Really what, what shined a light on is when Barbieri got his payout, he had a BOT payout at a commissioner's rate and I wanted to dig into it more. And that's why I asked Young No and his team to take a peek at it.
See. You're muted, Mr. Mahoney. Bill, you're muted.
Come on, Bill.
We gotta act like we've been here before. There you go.
This is actually a creature of collective bargaining. It's article 9.10 of the contract with the IBPO where they get 200 hours, they can accrue 200 hours at a time and a half. And then, you know, they're, they're correct, it is paid out between the ranks so that if you, if you can carry your time from patrol to sergeant to lieutenant to captain. But I think we have to keep in mind that even though we do that, you know, if we paid that out at the end of your patrol career before you're promoted to sergeant, you're going to accrue the time as a sergeant and then you're going to get paid out as a sergeant before you become a lieutenant. So this is just, are we prepared to do that at each step of the process? Because they're, they're going to be engraved long enough, most of them to accrue this time. It doesn't really become a factor until you've get into a non-bargaining position such as a deputy chief or a, or the commissioner's rank. Other than that, it doesn't, I don't know if there's going to be such a big difference there. But it is a creature of collective bargaining and it would have to be proposed at the table. That's the way you're going to change it. It is a creature also of the Fair Labor Standards Act.
Got it. And do we think that we'll be able to implement these policy changes only with the, the new folks coming on board and having other folks grandfathered in? Or are we trying to avoid that and implement it across the board now?
I think it's always easier for administration to do it, to treat everyone the same. When you have that grandfather group, you're kind of like, well, are they in it or are they out of it? And then there's, I think, I think the auditor will, will agree that, you know, you're more likely to have problems or mistakes made when you're trying to have these two groups. But, you know, it's, it is an option and we have, we've done in the past. You'll hear it in the next, the next issue that Mr. No is going to present to you.
Got it. And I guess my last question is around the record keeping. I know I read somewhere in here that we're looking to move to eliminate the, the paper record keeping to something that is a little more advanced. Is that already happening? If not, how fast will it happen? And also how does that align with being in compliance with the state standards with respect to getting accredited?
So our understanding is that the Springfield Department, Police Department is looking into automating the record keeping, as you will. And they're looking into tell us staff and Blue Jay, but I don't know if, I don't know what's, at what stage they're at in streamlining the process. Maybe Jen could answer this.
Oh, Jen, go ahead. I'll comment afterwards.
If I may, we were, we've reached out to our current system, tell us staffs slash Kronos. And they, we're, we've had three or four meetings with them since this audit. This is a pretty complicated, both of these contracts, the IBPOE and the supervisor's contract are very complicated to make a software system off the shelf work. So that's why a lot of our processes are manual. But they potentially have another system that they just bought another company that might be able to, you know, interpret all these outliers outside of regular hours worked and get it in the system and be able to calculate it behind the scenes. So it's more automated and less manual.
Got it.
So Counselor Hurst, in addition, I actually had a conversation with Kronos Tell Staff last week where this came up at a higher level. We're discussing our implementation of Kronos, but I brought the Tell Staff. Jen's absolutely correct. They have a workforce central platform where they actually want to come in and rewrite all of our contracts and all of our rules to actually start addressing some of these like weird things or the, kind of weird, but the different things in the, in the contracts, both IBPO and the supervisors to help make it easier and streamline payment. Our goal is to have less, less human intervention on payroll, less paperwork because that, you know, lends itself to more errors or mistakes or even just the volume, work volume that Lynn and Jen have to do to make this stuff happen. So we're in very active conversations with Kronos Tell Staff.
Excellent. So if there are no other questions from the counselors regarding this issue, I'll just conclude this item by saying, one, well done TJ. This is, this is, this is excellent. This definitely will save the city, I'm sure, money in the long run. I think the only thing that I would want to stress, Mr. No, is the, the same thing that I mentioned in the last meeting is that there ought to be a mechanism in which the audit committee can go back and make sure that we're monitoring implementation. Because all of this work that you put in and all of, you know, the, the catches by TJ to actually, you know, to, to, to get this audit off the ground and to see that it's necessary mean very little if we're not going to follow up and make sure folks are actually following the processes that you've agreed to and that you think are necessary.
Yeah, if I can add to that, that's part of our process is that we'll do a follow-up review report in 12 months and I'll report back to the committee on the status of our recommendations.
Excellent. If there are no further questions, we'll move on to item number two.
Okay. So, does everyone see my screen?
Yeah.
Yes.
Okay. So the next item is the Springfield Police Department Educational Incentive Program Payment Review. It is also known as the Quinn bill. We did this review because TJ had asked us to do the review. He was concerned about the calculation of the Quinn payment. So our objective for this review consisted of evaluating established policies and procedures and determine if the Quinn payments were properly supported and accurate. So the audience may already know this, but the police department has an incentive program for police officers to obtain advanced degrees in criminal justice known as the Police Career Incentive Program, AKA Quinn bill. It's the incentive compensation is based upon a percentage of annual base salary and dependent upon the type of degree that is earned as of September 1st. Payments are made every November and there are 300 officers that partake in the program. The city expenditures on this Quinn program amounted to approximately 3.8 million in fiscal year 20. So our overall conclusion with this review is that the police department, they do have programs, albeit policies and programs in place, but they were based upon past practices. And we made recommendations to improve on some of these policies and programs. So with that said, I'll move on to finding one, which is located on page six. So our first finding has to do with the police, the police department not having degrees and transcripts for some of the officers. So you, you want to make sure that you have these documents in place to cooperate that they've actually obtained their degrees and certification. I think it pertained to those officers that were, I think, participating in the program prior to, I think, 2010. That's when the state had administered the program. So moving on to finding two. We noted that certain Quinn payments did not fully comply with the union agreements. So in two way, we noted that the, um, the payments adjustment for injured on duty did not conform to what stated in the union agreement, especially in terms of the calculation. The police department had used 260 days in the denominator versus 243 days as stated in contract. So that resulted in a small, a small difference. And I believe the police or city management is going to talk to the union about conforming the calculation to the contract. Finding three. On page eight, there were certain contractual terms that weren't defined in the agreements or the, both the union agreements, officers and supervisors. For example, the annual base rate and base salary was undefined. Adjustments to EIP payments, which included promotions and non-workdays. So the, the Springfield Police Department, they do have policies for adjust, adjusting base salary, but it's not defined anywhere in the union agreements. Moving on to page 13, EIP payment date. So the union agreements just says EIP payments will be made in November when the current practice is to pay it in the second pay period in November. And lastly, the method, method of EIP payment. So all payments for EIP made in November, a second pay, a second pay period, and they're made by live, live paychecks. Like most of these police officers receive direct deposit when they're paid. So we're just recommending that get rid of the live checks. We don't, we think it's a less efficient process and conform, you know, as much as possible to a direct deposit method and possibly paying the EIP regularly throughout the year. But that's something that Bill will talk about. Finding, so finding five. And this is the main finding in our review report. So the EIP program is an annual program and one of the criteria is to look at, the program, the program runs from September 1st to October 31st. And it's basically, it evaluates whether you obtain advanced degree. And it's basically, it evaluates whether you obtained advanced degree prior to September 1st. So that's the annual period. But the compensation on which the EIP payment is based doesn't follow this period from September 1st to October 31st. It's actually based on when the payment is made, which is November. I think the second pay period, pay period in November. And that pay, pay, pay rate is higher than the average pay period for that annual period that we're talking about. So so there's a mismatch. So the city's accounting policy states that you should recognize expense as it's incurred. You're recognizing, you know, you're recognizing expense radically throughout the year as opposed to when it's actually paid. So we looked at other communities to see what their practices were. And we looked at Quincy and Brockton. So the cities of Quincy and Brockton, they follow the accrual method. They record and pay Quinn payments as they are incurred and radically throughout the year. So had the city follow this accrual method in matching or recognizing the expense as it's incurred, it would save approximately 200, it would have saved approximately 230,000 for the review, review period. So and as I mentioned to TJ and Bill, this is, the existing practice is based upon what was done in the past. But this is something that we think would be in compliance with the city's accounting policy and basically a fairer, I guess, practice. Right now, the current practice is heavily tilted towards officers by using this November pay rate. So our overall recommendation is to update the policies and procedures as for the findings noted in this report by defining key terms and following the city's accounting policy and obtaining degrees and transcript for all of its officers that partake in the program. Any questions?
There any questions from the counselors who are on the call? Counselor Davila?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Good afternoon to everybody. Very quick, good to see you again, Auditor. We got two questions. One, we got in the Quinn Bill. If I understood you correctly, we're paying 3.8 million dollars. That was for fiscal year 20. And that cohort is about 300 officers. Is that just a yearly basis, given inflation? Or is that just a set payment yearly of 3.8 million dollars?
It's based upon annual compensation a- as of November of each year.
So that means next year is going to be higher?
Yes.
Okay. And just out of curiosity, I mean, once, but one talking, I want the best education and the best cop that Monica can buy us. We, I want the best of their good competent officer. Isn't it cheaper to pay them to go to school and then give them a raise according to their education throughout the years?
I would know that. I know the, the, this program was in place for a very long time. I think it started in 1970. It was a state program. State used to fund half of this incentive. That changed, I think, in 2010, which the state stopped funding it and basically the city municipalities in Massachusetts.
So we're responsible for 100% now?
Yeah, 100% now, along with other municipalities throughout Massachusetts.
Okay. My understanding, if I'm not mistaken, a lot of municipalities are doing away with this, right?
Excuse me?
A lot of municipalities are kind of shying away from this.
Last I heard, there are a lot of municipalities that still partake in the program because it's negotiated into the union contracts.
And I realize that. I realize it becomes a very sticky union slash political issue very quickly as a whole potato, but that's not a small amount of money. That's 3.8 million dollars.
So Counselor, I'll give you a slight bit of history. This is TJ. Really, this has been around as Young said since the 70s. It's been negotiated in the contract. The state paid for 50% of it for the longest time. When they hit the recession back in 2010, they refused to pay their half. Then encouraged every city or town to negotiate with their unions, whether or not they're going to pay the second half. At that time, Attorney Mahoney negotiated what we call Quinn Light. I don't know if that's affectionately a term or that we use, but it's a version that is, allows us to kind of over the next how many years, get their payments down a bit. You'll see it was 4.1 million in FY19, 3.8 in FY20. And so we're heading in that direction based upon a smaller payment for the Quinn benefit. But we thought it was important for our police department that we support them in the effort that they went through to get their degrees and to get the education that they have, that we honor that, even though the state didn't fund their share.
So what's happening is that we have our more senior officers are actually retiring and they're at the full Quinn benefit. So it's everyone that's hired after 2014 that's on this Quinn Light, as TJ was saying. So every year, even though the the cost is going up because of the cost of living on the salaries goes up, we're actually saving money because we have more of the senior officers that are retiring and they're no longer getting full Quinn and they're being replaced by officers that have, that may have a bachelor's degree but are at Quinn Light, which is half of what the Quinn Bill was. So instead of the 10, 20, and 25%, it's only 5, 10, and 12 and a half percent.
Thank you.
Did, do I have a question for more or?
Go for it. You asked your one more. We still have 23 minutes. I also want to acknowledge Counselor Whitfield, who is also joining us this afternoon, and then we'll get right to you, Counselor Allen.
Thank you. Thank you. So, so the Quinn, the Quinn bill is still in effect. So that means that any officer now that goes on and gets higher degree will still qualify for even the version of the Quinn Light, correct?
It's not, they're not getting the Quinn Bill. They're getting the educational incentive in the contract now. It's not, it's, the new officers are not getting any Quinn Bill benefit.
Okay. Okay. And do we know a number in the future for that EIP?
We know a number of how many people are getting it?
Yeah.
Well, we, we would have that. I don't have that personally, but the police department, I'm sure has it, or maybe the auditor has that.
Yeah, there are 300 officers that partake in the program, as TJ and Bill had mentioned. The program is split into two pools. You have the legacy officers that, you know, have the, I guess, full percentage that were applicable under the state program and the Quinn Light program, which is half that amount. So as that, you may still have 300 officers, but the mix is going to change.
It's different, okay.
More, more officers under the Light.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Counselor Davila, Counselor Allen.
Thanks, Mr. Mr. Chair. TJ, this is directed more towards you. In item five, it says, you know, the finding is the accounting methodology is inconsistent with the city's accounting policy. So how do you plan to deal with that? Are you going to hopefully get the Quinn Bill or the EDIP, whatever it is, accounting policy from the police department to line up with the city's accounting policy? Is that your plan?
All my hope is to actually take this to the union and see if we can either pay it out at, if we pay it out one time, I want it to be a a rate that is averaged out over the course of the year or if they will pay it more frequently like other communities may do through that. But that's going to take a negotiation with the police unions.
So any change here out of Mr. No's recommendations, any change is going to be negotiated?
Correct.
Would have to be, would have to be negotiated, I mean.
TJ has the right idea in that if we can do that Brockton model, that's the best. It's a matter of whether or not tell the staff will support that. And I think we need to do a little work on that. But, you know, Young's report mentions that Brockton model, which is what TJ is talking about, and I think that's the way to go. We would just pay it every week rather than having one pay at the end of the year. So we're actually capturing it in lifetime, what that educational incentive is worth during that week.
All right.
And that's the preferred method because when you do these payments more frequently, you'll catch, you'll review this process more frequently and be able to catch anomalies and mistakes.
Sorry to interrupt. Yeah, I got to jump onto this COVID hearing. I'm double booked. Can I, any other questions that I can? I can cover for you guys?
I'm all set.
All right.
I'm all set, yeah.
Thanks for that. If anything comes up, text me or call me.
All right.
Thanks, guys.
Are there any other questions for Mr. No or the police department? Otherwise, we will close out this meeting and move on to the COVID meeting for those of you who are interested in attending. For those of you counselors who were not here before, what we decided to do was that while we await more information with respect to the contracts, with respect to the municipal contracts that TJ, as well as Theo, are going to look into, we will set up a meeting that is separate in and of itself to really delve into the issues around MBs and WBs and contracts in the city of Springfield, et cetera. So we want to make sure that we have the most accurate information before we address with Mr. No what it is that we'd like him to audit. So thank you.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Counselor Whitfield.
Was this sent to us already?
Yes, I forwarded it to the council, but I'll get you, I'll, I'll forward it to you separately right after this meeting.
And can, before you go, can you just tell me what EIP stands for?
Educational Incentive Program.
All righty, because I was reading it, but I didn't know what I was.
You're not the only one, Counselor.
We might have needed it spelled out and in the parentheses because I was like, what? All right, thank you.
All right. With that said, thank you, everyone, for being in attendance. We will adjourn this meeting and jump on the COVID-19 meeting.